Okay, I would like to call to order the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors AM meeting this Thursday, April 6th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Just a reminder, a recording device will be in use during this meeting. We'll do the pledge and then we'll go from there. So let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Isles, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever new, just as for all. Okay, Mr. Revan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pardon the interruption this early in the meeting. Act 65 of 2021 establishes rules for the posting of an agenda in advance of a meeting. In your agenda before you, item number 9B did not appear on the agenda on the township's website. We are forbidden from making amendments to the posted agenda in a period less than 24 hours before the beginning of a meeting. This board may amend its agenda by a majority vote after stating the reasons for so doing. I would like to say that the reason that this is, this is a staff omission. Item number 9B is ordinance 3 of 2023, which was properly advertised on March 21st and 28th in the daily local news. So notice was provided to the community, but it did not appear, as I said earlier, on the agenda. At this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to amend their agenda to add Agenda Item 9B to the agenda, and then I will post that to the website immediately this afternoon.
Is there any objection?
I have no objection.
To posting 9B, all right? I make a motion that we amend the agenda and include the item 9B on the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and my apologies for the oversight.
Thank you. Okay, Police Department Oath of Office. Are we ready?
Good morning, everyone. I'm looking around the room, and I think I know everyone, but I don't know anyone. My name is Marcosi, I'm the police chief of East Brandywine Township. I'm honored this morning, along with our chairman of the board, Carl Croft, to announce the motion of Jeff Dan Kenness to run deputy police chief. Before I say anymore, I'd like to invite Jeff forward, who is like Dallas, and his lawyer, Abby. Yeah, just stand next to me. So I just want to give you a little quick bio on Jeff. Jeff began his career with the East Brandywine Township Police Department in August of 2011 as a part-time officer. He was made full-time with us in July of 2012. He was promoted to corporal in 2016, promoted to sergeant in January of 2018, and he was promoted to lieutenant in May of 2018. He has an associate's degree in emergency management from Delaware County Community College, and I don't think he would mind me announcing that as of next week, he will have completed his bachelor's degree in public safety administration from Newman University. So congratulations on that. He's taken them a couple of years here. Jeff wears many hats in our PD. I'm not going to embarrass him, but it's kind of scary, everything that he does. He, most importantly, is our accreditation manager. He took on that project in 2015 and had us fully accredited in 2016. And since then, along with Detective Kyle Harness, we've gone through two re-accreditations. So that is a ton of work in of itself, and so I'm very, you know, appreciative of those efforts. But if we're looking over Jeff's bio, I think today's ceremony is important for a number of reasons. The first one is that the Board of Supervisors recognized Jeff's hard work over the years. Jeff's level of job knowledge and of police operations, which I got to tell you is scary at times because he just rattles off stuff that, you know, I kind of like, my head goes spinning. And he's, his knowledge of law and the expertise just at accreditation is something that I think the board has recognized, and they want to reward him for. Secondly, our Board of Supervisors understanding the importance of retention. All of you in that were back in the room know what police departments are going through right now, trying to hire police officers. It's a very difficult job, and not a lot of people will want to do it anymore. We're all going through the same thing. And today's ceremony is an example of our Board of Supervisors wanting to keep one of our most important assets. Finally, Jeff's appointment today is a message to all our residents, and it's a message to all the officers in the PD, that Jeff's promotion to deputy chief, I hopefully, will be taking a step to locking in our succession plan for the police department, as we're going to go through a lot of changes in the next couple of years. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Chairman Croft to administer your oath of office.
Thank you, Chief. And I, please state your name.
Aye, Jeffrey Ian Kenness.
Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the laws and ordinances of the Township of East Brandywine, and the law enforcement code of ethics, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer with fidelity to the best of my ability, uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration of a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, and ancestry, handicap, or disability. This oath administered by me, Carl Croft, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, on April 6th, 2023, is my bid. I please swear to my heart. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everyone that came out today. If it wasn't for my team, my family, my friends, and the brothers and sisters in other emergency services, I couldn't be this successful. I truly thank everyone for all the support and help they gave me. I was forward to many more years' work with everyone. On that note, next door, we have some light freshness sandwiches, cake, and whatnot. Hope everyone will join us. If it's okay with the board, we're going to vacate your meeting.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have two points of order before we, before we resume. The, the first is, I'd like, just a reminder, we, we did bypass the public comment on Agenda Item section.
I was going to do that.
Very good. And the second is, I'd like to announce that via speakerphone Supervisor Winters is joining us. Jason, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes, I hear you.
All right, we, we can hear you, Jason, thank you. All right, under public comment for Agenda Items, Rules for Conduct of Public Meetings Established by Resolution 2001-08, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comments may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. And now we're going to move down to item four, minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes, as stated.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you hear that, Jason?
I've lost him.
All right, we'll move on.
It's, it's the board of meetings again.
I did, I read it.
Yeah, you stopped it.
I still have to ask, is there any public comment?
Yes.
Was that a yes to public comment?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We've approved the ministration.
Well, on those minutes, I did vote no on the, on the purchase of the wood making. Audible cannot hear me. I just wanted to correct that.
So the minister approved with a two to one vote.
So what do you mean, so I know, I understand that, Carl, but I wasn't in the meeting. As a chairman, I don't know why you wouldn't allow me to participate remotely. You know, it's a morning session, we could, we could have held this meeting up for five minutes to allow me to do this without having to use our township manager's cell phone. I mean, this is the 21st century.
Well, you keep cutting out, I'm not sure. I thought, I thought you were, you did.
This is exactly my point. Can we not get a Zoom call for remote supervisor? We've done this before. This one. Why do you have to start a meeting when there's only two of you, when you know that I'm, I'm trying to attend remotely, Mr. Chairman?
I don't have a understanding of this.
I, I think the suggestion is that we take a recess.
Because this is a bad connection. We're trying to supervise, attend a meeting using the township manager's speakerphone. Of course, this is not going to be a good connection. So can we, can we get some technical people here and try to get a phone call and try to get a Zoom connection?
I think he wants us to take a break, so we can see if Luke can connect him in the normal manner.
Okay.
Super audience, Carl. Second meeting in a row that you started without. It's, it's, this is egregious.
All right, so I, let's take a recess this evening.
I, I'd like to speak about, I'd like to speak about the new subject for number one. So can we take a brief recess to try to get Zoom working?
Absolutely. I call the meeting back to order.
Let the record state, Chairman Croft waited 15 minutes now for a phone connection. The line was tested about eight minutes ago by Luke Revan, Assistant Manager, or Township Manager, for the Zoom phone call. It was acceptable. He got connection. It was passed on to Chairman, to Supervisor Winters. Supervisor Winters has had now 12 more minutes to call in. No call has been received, so we're going to proceed.
Thank you. All right, the next agenda item is Authorization to Pay Bills and Approve Payroll. I've reviewed the bills. I make a motion that we authorize the township to pay the bills and approve the payroll. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Old business, is there any old business? Seeing none. New business? We have, A is Panoni Proposal, East Reeseville Road Extension Traffic Study. Mr. Revan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Included in your packet this morning is a proposal from Panoni Engineering to conduct a study on what is commonly called the East Reeseville Road Extension. The East Reeseville Road Extension was a constituent part of the recently adopted official map of the Township of East Brandywine. Chairman Croft and myself have been meeting with the Township Engineer Nate Klein to discuss the potential impact of that were it to be constructed. The proposal in your packet, it describes the manner in which it would be studied and a cost, which is $24,500. That cost would be borne from the traffic impact fee fund. Mr. Croft, would you, anything you want to add to my brief summary?
It's the next step of an informal process to start determining if, where, and when the road might be able to build, be built. The next step is a traffic study. The traffic study, in fact, may show that it's not even warranted, or that the design we've picked, picked, even though it's not an approved location, isn't going to solve the problem. So without a traffic study, we can't move forward, we can't go to PennDOT and, and talk with them, so the traffic study is the next thing. I don't believe, we've had a traffic study since 2014, so I think a lot's changed in nine years. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Panoni Proposal to Perform a Traffic Study.
And I will second.
Any comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 7B, Green Flush Quote, Prefabricated Restroom for East Brandywine Township Park, CoStarz Contract. Mr. Revan.
Yes, this is me again. We have been on a long path to this point. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the most recent action on getting a bathroom in Phase One of the East Brandywine Township Community Park was a, thank you, pardon the interruption, I do see someone joining. Can you hear us, Jason? All right, so I was, I was just on Agenda Item 7B, which is the Green Flush Quote, and making a, a summary of how we got to this point. In June of 2022, we released bid specs for site work, which included providing water and sewer to a site in Phase One. In July of 2022, the board rejected all bids as the, the site work alone came in more than the anticipated cost of the entire project. As an alternative approach to getting a bathroom built in Phase One, the Township has approached CoStarz Vendor, and CoStarz is the state cooperative purchasing program. These are state contracts that allow us to get discounted products without requiring advertised and sealed bids. Green Flush has provided a quote for a prefabricated bathroom. The quote is for $21,503. By way of further background relative to the financing of this, the Township has received a DCNR grant to pay half of total costs, up to $165,000. The Township has dug a well at the site. The Township has secured a financial commitment from East Brandywine Youth Athletics in the amount of $50,000, and a similar amount from the, the East Brandywine Foundation, which is the repository of funds that were private fundraising dollars from things like the 5K and the For the Parks Golf outing. So at this time, I would respectfully ask the board to authorize Township staff to execute the contract from Green Flush, subject to the solicitor's feedback on the terms included, and the addition of a non-discrimination amendment to the terms per the requirements of DCNR.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we accept a Green Flush Quote to fabricate and install a restroom in the community park.
With, with his, with his exceptions, I'll. There would be amendments to the ter, so, so what's in your packet?
With any amendments to the, to the terms and conditions.
Correct.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jason, are you voting?
According to the Zoom screen, he is no longer connected at this point.
All right, 7C, Design and Bid Specs for Culvert on Old Horseshoe Pike.
Thank you. As you're aware, in September 2021, Hurricane Ida blew through East Brandywine and other areas, and there are still two, I'll say, issues or damaged areas that we have within the township. One's Old Horseshoe Pike, it's a culvert, and the second one is Bonsville Mill Bridge. The first one I'll talk about is Old Horseshoe Pike. We've received a proposal from Panoni Associates for, I'm sorry, I thought I wrote down the total number, for $209,223. This is to do the design work for the, a new culvert on, on Old Horseshoe Pike to replace the existing culvert. It also includes the permanent application for PADEP and the bid specifications for the, for the project, so that at the end of this proposal, the project will be bid. The second project is Bonsville Mill Bridge, there was damage to the bridge.
Can we, can we hold off on that?
Sure, sure.
Let's take them one at a time. I, I have a comment on C. I know this sounds ridiculous, but sometimes the whole governmental process is ridiculous. There's approximately eight homes along that Old Horseshoe Pike. The bridge is approximately in the middle. All the homes have current access to 322.
Correct.
Why are we even bothering to replace the bridge? Just because it's free money?
Yeah, it is, the, the costs will be covered by FEMA.
I know, but it's never free. You paid for it, I'm paying for it.
I understand.
Joe, you're paying for it. I'm just curious, has any thought been given there? I mean, maybe the residents don't even want it completed because now they don't get any through traffic.
I have received a few comments from residents, and mostly what I've heard is, when is the, going to be, the road going to be reopened?
So even though it costs us, doesn't cost us any money, so the government's going to pay for everything.
Correct. So, yes, it's a, it's a FEMA-financed project because of the emergency declaration, where PEMA, the State Emergency Agency, is making the match.
Why don't we spend that money out in the Midwest where those people really need it? I mean, it, it just, it just boggles my mind. Why don't we dump a few 36-inch pipe in there and make our own culvert?
We had a H&amp;H hydraulic and hydrology study completed, and we could dump two 36-inch pipes in there, but that would not be adequate for a 100-year storm.
Okay, how about three?
So the, the new design is just for a 100-year storm. It would, even to put pipes in there, you would still have to do.
And they got to do the, the concrete wing walls at either side.
Pardon?
You'd have to put some kind of wing walls on.
Right. And you'd still need a.
And then they, then they wouldn't pass anything. I mean, do you, what kind of bridge are they going to put there? Is it going to be a box culvert? Is it going to be just the?
Probably a box culvert or an arch culvert. That would be adequate size.
Right, but an arch culvert costs a lot more to construct, don't they?
I'm not sure. I can't say one way or the other.
It just seems so alien. Okay. You want to make a motion to accept the design proposal?
Yep, I make a motion to accept the design proposal for the culvert on Old Horseshoe Pike.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
No way around that, huh?
The, the second portion is the Bonsville Mill. During Hurricane Ida, the, the Beaver Creek caused scour underneath the existing footers of the mill bridge, and also washed out behind one of the wing walls on the bridge. Since then, the Township Road Department has done some, what's called temporary repairs to the wing wall, and that was in order to get the bridge reopened and permit the, the delivery of the soils, amended soils and everything for the Bonsville Mill. The, the bridge still has scour, so it's still, you know, it's a critical item to maintain the bridge. And this proposal from Panoni is to, pretty much the same thing as Old Horseshoe Pike, except it's not a replacement. It's the scour repair, extending the wing wall, DEP permits, bid specifications, plans, and then the project will be put out for bid. Total cost of that project is $117,800, and this, this is for the bid specifications. And if PADEP requires a H&amp;H study be completed, then Panoni has a proposal, additional cost of $72,400.
Thank you. I make a motion that we accept the Panoni Proposal to engineer the repair work to the bridge at Bonsville Mill.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Subdivision Zoning Applications. You're not here for that, are you? Joe, we're running out of items for you.
Somebody behind me?
Oh, I know, okay. Ordinances and Resolutions for Consideration, item nine, Resolution 4 of 2023, Resolution of the Board of Supervisors of East Brandywine Township, adopting the East Brandywine Sewage Facility Plan. Joe?
That sounds like something I know about. But I do like to comment on spending money just because it's there. I mean, it seems like we go through money left and right anymore. Anyway, that's my thoughts on that. The 537.
And unfortunately, there's nobody here in the room other than you.
It's amazing how much money just goes sliding through government's hands. It's just really, it's just unconscionable. But at any rate, I'm here this morning, and thanks for inviting me to, to come in and just give you an update on the 537 plan. I think it was two months ago I was in front of this board and with a proposal to complete the 537 plan, address the, the public comments that were received during the 537 plan, and get it prepared for submission to DEP. Just a brief summary, the 537 plan was prepared in accordance with a plan of study that was submitted to DEP back, way back in 2017. And that plan of study really is kind of like a proposal. The proposal included the identification of some malfunctions in the township, doing what they call a needs analysis in the township, which basically, we sent out a survey, got surveys back, evaluated the information from the homeowners. We went out and did a site investigation of a small percentage of those surveys that were received, and based our recommendations on that information that we got from the homeowners. We also suggested that a part of the 537 plan would be dedicated to understanding or sharing an understanding of the sewer systems and the sewer areas that were out there. That would be the Hill and Dale. That would be the Hillendale Sewer Area, Apple Cross Sewer Area, Little Washington, and then Keats Glen. It also suggested that the five thirty-seven plan would identify where additional disposal capacity might be available. I believe that we've addressed everything that was originally in our plan of study, plus some more items that were included on the checklist. Hopefully, the supervisors and staff have had a chance to take a look at the five thirty-seven plan, and I can give you a little bit more, but I'm here for any questions that you guys might have with regards to that.
My question, I guess, is more pertaining to where are we in relation to other townships? Are we ahead of the curve? We status quo? Like, what's your take?
So...
Sorry, I was just going to say, I just feel like other townships aren't taking this as seriously as we are, that's all.
From a planning standpoint?
From everything.
Yeah, well, I got to tell you, I think that the township is well ahead, and municipal authority is well ahead to have some very good vision of what the township might need in the future. I could tell you that East Brandywine is kind of in a peculiar place. Some of the surrounding municipalities, many of the surround, all of the surrounding municipalities with the exceptional Wallace, basically are sending their sewage down to a big pipe system. Everybody to the east is generally going to DARA, you know, to a seven-million-gallon treatment plant. Count and West Brandywine and West Count and Valley, they all go down to the Coatesville Plant, which is 10 million plus. East Brandywine really is kind of unique in that it has only a couple small treatment plants, and they are trying to discharge sewage through the subsurface rather than a stream discharge. That really happened a number of years ago, probably 1990s, maybe even before that, when...
1986, you, East Brandywine, I was one of the founders of DARA. East Brandywine, for some reason, opted not to join DARA.
Right.
That was 1986.
Thank you for that. So that kind of closed the door on sending packing sewer up and sending it out of the township, and as a result, you know, there are a couple treatment plants here in the township. Looking forward, Jason, sorry about that, Kyle, looking forward, I believe that this five thirty-seven plan lays out the future for probably 20 years. It looks like the existing infrastructure will be able to handle the land development that's coming in, with the exception of disposal areas, although the current developments that are in front of the board do propose land disposal areas. The plan suggests the use of a sewer management program to address existing on-lot systems. There are a number of suspected malfunctions in some 13 areas in the township. There's really no confirmed malfunctions, so we didn't see any raw sewage on the ground. And I believe that the adoption and execution of a sewer management program through an ordinance would be the best way to handle your township, because it does not propose extension of sewers into any areas at this point. It really is asking for an inventory of the on-lot systems that are out there.
I think it's worth noting that this updated plan still provides that the majority of the township is served by on-lot, individual on-lot septic systems.
Yeah, and there's no change, there's no proposed change to any of that. I'm a professional engineer as well as an SEO, so I do get involved on on-lot systems quite a bit. The best way to take care of them is to manage them. I mean, more and more on-lot systems have mechanical equipment in there that can fail, that need regular maintenance, and I think a lot of homeowners don't realize, you know, that there is maintenance needed on these systems. So I believe that a sewer management program is going to be the best chance for success in the township for the next 20 years, and allow us to develop an inventory of all the on-lot systems out there, so we can hopefully get an understanding of how many cesspools are out there that don't meet current regulations, maybe a number of sand mounds that kind of have a limited timeframe for use. But we do recommend taking a look at the existing ordinance, modifying that existing ordinance to require execution of sewer management program. So that would be three-year pumping with an initial development of inventory in the first round, and then every three years it'd be reoccurring pumping, very similar to a lot of the standards out there right now.
Yeah, most townships have that operation in effect right now, where they, the pumper would then not issue, they would issue a letter to the township as well, saying this is what occurred at this property.
Yes.
Is that something that's required? If I'm a homeowner and I'm maintaining my system and my contractor turns me in, I'm not going to be happy.
Yeah, but the reality of it is, if you're uphill the neighborhood, you're flushing sewage into their well area, it would...
That's a different issue.
Most of the ordinances just require that you pump at some interval, the tank be pumped and cleaned, and that there's some mechanism or system that the pumpers and haulers notify the township that they did it. You could go an additional step and require inspections and other things, but that's up to the board. You don't have to require it.
But my knowledge is there are certain developments that that's part of the homeowners association.
And it could be.
Like...
Heather Wood, I think.
Heather Wood, right.
Well, Aqua has a very similar program with backflow providers. If you have a sprinkler system and your water is contaminated entering into clean drinking water for other, you have to show that it was backflow tested. So it's a very similar process, it's just this time it's the township versus the state.
Right. So you would be electing to do a sewer management program. The option for that would be considering extension of the public sewer without knowing all the inventory that's out there. Dealing with another client, they were trying to force public sewers into an area where they had just done a five thirty-seven plan, and they sent these surveys out to homeowners. Well, the problem with sending the surveys out to homeowners is you don't really have a good understanding of their on-lot system. Some people think they have holding tanks when they actually have a septic tank. Some people might mistake green grass from gray water system as a failure for their on-lot system. So as an engineer, I don't give a lot of credit to that, that survey information that comes back. I believe that a sewer management program, if done correctly, will go out and identify the inventory. The inventory collection will be a little painful for the township in that you're going to ask homeowners to have somebody come on, just as you're suggesting, and kind of rat out or point out some problems with the system. But a lot of these small, a lot of these systems can be corrected from a malfunction to a completely functioning system with the simple replacement of a baffle or a leveling of a distribution box in the system. And a lot of the, a lot of the repairs are really inexpensive to make, but I don't think that the homeowners realize that there are solutions out there that won't cost them.
Well, I'm, you know, obviously, if your sewage is affecting a neighbor, that, obviously, that has to be fixed. I wasn't suggesting that, but there was two, two of the first developments in the township, the sewer enforcement officer was the one doing the perk tests and designs and building the septic systems back in the day. I don't know whether you're aware of that, Richard Marion?
But keep in mind that...
So there's a lot of problems. I even know, I don't think it's a wise tale, that there were two homes in Locust Knoll hooked up to the same drain field.
Don't doubt that a bit.
Well, and, but keep in mind, the, whether or not you enact a sewage management ordinance and the extent of the requirements is up to you, it's up to this board. It's included in the five thirty-seven plan, I think partially because DEP will want to see that.
Right.
But what ultimately happens regarding sewer management and maintenance is up to you.
So right now, the county has records of all the septics, correct?
They have record of septics. Not all the septics, but they have a record of repairs. They have pumping records. I used to believe that they were mandatory, but I have since found out that they are not mandatory for submittal. So that's why I kind of corrected the all statement to some. When we, and we did go in and evaluate the records that the county has as part of our needs analysis to come up with the list of, you know, suspected malfunctions.
And the health department has records if you obtained a permit?
Right.
They don't have any.
They don't have them back in the 70s, because I had a health officer knock on my door, wanted to see my septic permit. This was only, this was in the 90s. And I said, you've got to be kidding me. Go find my builder. Oh, by the way, he passed away 10 years ago.
I don't know.
So our records are probably only start sometime in the 80s.
Yeah, I know that there's records out there. I can't speak to how all-inclusive the county has their records.
But again, the decision or the extent of any future ordinance is up to you.
Okay, that's, I won't be here by then, so. I'll be down there fixing that bridge at night. Okay.
So just to follow, to close out here, there is a schedule for adoption of the five thirty-seven plan and implementation at the very back of the document. Once the five thirty-seven plan is approved by the Board of Supervisors and submitted to DEP, it typically takes up to six months to gain approval. I can tell you that generally, they're going to send comments back, and there might be a little bit of back and forth.
They're really going to read that thing, it's this thick.
They'll read it, unfortunately. They read it well. After that, after the adoption, after the final approval, the township would then have two years to move forward with the implementation of a sewer management program. So it gives you a little bit of time to consider how you want to go forward, to what extent you want your management plan to, you know, develop an inventory. And then we're proposing that you execute the sewer management program in three different timeframes, Zone One, Zone Two, and Zone Three, as I've kind of done the evaluation in three different zones in the five thirty-seven plan.
Anything else, Joe?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Three of 2023.
How is that our Resolution Four of 2023?
I'm sorry.
My apologies.
You're right. Resolution Four of the Board of Supervisors of East Brandywine Township, adopting the East Brandywine Sewage Facilities Plan.
And I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance Three, now we got Ordinance Three. Amending of the East Brandywine Township Code, Chapter 399, titled Zoning, and known as the East Brandywine Township Zoning Ordinance of 1989 by amending Article 14, titled Zoning Hearing Board, and Article 20, titled Amendments. Mr. Revan, I had to think faster than a Roman numeral.
So March 16th, the Board of Supervisors gave staff and the solicitor permission to advertise this ordinance, and earlier this meeting, we amended the agenda to include this item. In your packet is a copy of the ordinance. As I mentioned, on the 16th of last month, this is a housekeeping ordinance. It is reconciling the requirements of the municipality's planning code with the requirements in our own code. The review was, the draft, the red line and the cover were both written by Solicitor Esti. Tom, do you have anything you would like to add?
Only that it's been properly advertised for enactment this morning. It was recommended for approval by your planning commission, and we got a comment letter from the Chester County Planning Commission, which had no substantive comments. They did have one comment about changing some of the references of board to zoning hearing board, which I made.
I move, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Three of 2023.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment on non-agenda items, is Jason on the phone by any chance?
No.
All right, seeing no, seeing we have no one to make public comments. Under notices, there was an executive session following the 316 PM meeting. Aren't you supposed to put in there what we discussed? So we discussed personnel and land issues. There will be a pension meeting following this hearing, this board meeting, I'm sorry. I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.